Senator Joe S. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, James C. Moylan, and Act to amend Section 61309(c)(4) of Chapter 61, Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to fast-tracking Guam Land Use Commission conditional use applications for temporary workers' housing facilities during pandemic conditions of readiness. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending here, beginning with my vice chairperson, Senator Sabina Perez, also Senator Joseph Augustine, Senator Telo Taitikui, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Frank Blass, and Senator James Moylan. Thank you for being here today. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of our mayors today. We have Mayor Savores, Mayor Paco, Mayor Rivera, Mayor Blass, and Vice Mayor Botista. Sidoos Masi for being here today. I know you have a very busy schedule today. We also are joined by the chairperson of the Guam Land Use Commission, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez. And we are joined by the Director of the Department of Land Management, Mr. Joe Borja. And of course, we have others who are present to testify, and I will introduce them as they come up. Okay, so we'll begin with Bill Number 38-36COR by Senator Telo Taitikui. And so Senator Taitikui, you may introduce your bill.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair, for the opportunity to present Bill 38-36 to the public. And Bill 38-36COR is an Act to amend 61106b of Article 1, Chapter 61, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing an administrative fine for the director of a member agency of the Application Review Committee that fails to provide adequate report or position statements on land use applications. And thank you again, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to introduce this bill. Madam Speaker, Bill 38 is my latest attempt at facilitating movement by member agencies of the Application Review Committee, the ARC, as it pertains to position statements required for land use applications. Currently, 21 GCA Section 61106 requirements before municipal public hearing requires, to the maximum extent possible, agency reports and position statements to be provided by the Application Review Committee within 30 days from the filing of the application. Madam Speaker, I introduced a similar measure, Bill 7-35, during the previous term, which passed with support by the majority of senators. However, Adaluc rejected the proposal, arguing the bill, quote, "pushes member agency directors as though the directors are maliciously delaying process." It will force member agencies to quickly submit haphazard reports and position statements so directors can avoid an exorbitant fee. And at that time, Madam Speaker, the fee was $1,000 per individual. While I appreciate Adaluc's perspective on this type of legislation, I am also mindful of recommendations offered by the Director of Land Management in 2019 to provide a 60-day review period. And more recently, during an oversight hearing concerning the matters of the Guam Land Use Commission, the same director, Director Joe Borja, stated that 21 GCA Section 61106, which allows for the current 30-day review period, may not have teeth. And I also like to, okay, to add to the teeth to the law, basically. So Bill 38 proposes to replace the 30-day period with a 45-working-day period, with up to 14 working days extensions for a maximum period of 73 working days or a little more than three months. And I'd like to just quote from a statement that was made in the 35th Guam Legislature when Bill 7 was introduced, the same type of bill, where it says here, by the director, he submitted an amendment to the comments that he made prior, and it says, "We support that if the position statements are not submitted before or at the municipal public hearing, a provision should be made in Bill 735 that the member agency has issued a default no objection and that the administrative fine shall still apply," unquote. Basically, meaning he's supporting that fine. So Madam Speaker, the time period proposed in Bill 38 provides ARC member agencies more than 30 calendar days but establishes a new time limit, which is not optional. And where a violation would result in an ARC member agency director paying $250 administrative fine as a personal expense compared to my previous bill had $1,000. Madam Speaker, based on information provided through the January 21, 2021 oversight hearing involving the Guam Land Use Commission, there are 47 land applications pending action. Projects include temporary working housing, telecommunications facilities, multifamily apartment buildings, single-family residential buildings, warehouses, conversions of an inactive hotel to multifamily apartment units, maintenance and storage buildings, et cetera. Madam Speaker, these 47 projects represent a combined investment of $1,920 billion, a real and substantial shot in the arm of our local economy, considering there are thousands of Guamanians displaced from work or have less hours to earn an income as a result of COVID-19, the public health emergency. The potential investment worth $1,900 billion do not include the multi-effect that these projects, if approved, may yield across different industries through the creation of jobs beyond construction and support for existing businesses such as restaurants, retail stores, telecommunications, healthcare facilities, and so much more. Madam Speaker, Bill 38-36 is straightforward. The measure supports good economic growth through a more responsive ARC process. I look forward to the comments, and those who are here to testify and have any questions to the measures, I'm here to answer those as well. And I thank the opportunity to have this bill heard today. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitikui. We'll now hear from the chairperson of the Guam Land Use Commission, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, members of the committee and members of the 36th Guam Legislature, thank you for this opportunity to be here. I do not have a written testimony to submit. I do want to say that the executive secretary of the Guam Land Use Commission, Mr. Joseph Borja, who also serves in the capacity as Director of Department of Land Management, is present at this hearing and will be providing testimony. The only one comment I do want to make and to address to Senator Taitikui is the proposed amendment for the review from 30 calendar days to 45 working days, in effect, one month to three months. I am sure that that will be met by some concerns as the hearing unfolds. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Director Borja, would you like to testify?
Yes, I would. I don't really have any detailed comments on it. But the Senator Taitikui has put on record what my previous comments were on the previous bill. What I meant by not having teeth was not really the amount of money, the amount of the fine. What I meant is like on line six on the first page where it says, "Until any and all available reports and position statements have been received." The reason for this amendment to this section here was that municipal planning councils and mayors would bring up a concern when we have the municipal public hearings out in the various municipalities that there may not be a position statement in already from Water Works or with Power. And sometimes the questions that the public brings up is, "How is this going to affect my water pressure?" And if the agency has not submitted a position statement into the record for the hearing, you know, we won't be able to answer that question. So the teeth that should be in there is either any position statement that comes in, set up your meeting, or wait for all position statements to come in before your hearing. So that's the teeth in there that I was referring to, not the amount of the fine. I don't really want to be an enforcer of this as a Director of Land Management, but you know, if the law passes, and that's what it is, then I will implement the law as enacted, as passed and enacted. End of my testimony.
All right. Thank you, Director Borja. We'll now hear from Mr. Daniel Swabe.
Hey, thank you. I'd like to ask first of all, Speaker, if my written testimony was already distributed. If so, I'll just paraphrase it and not read it.
Yes, it's been distributed to everyone. And in fact, in the chat, I think those documents are also available on the chat on this Zoom.
Okay, very good, very good. Then since I have the written document, I'll just paraphrase it and get through it a little more quickly. First of all, I want to start by expressing my complete appreciation for Senator Telo's help here. She's always been a supporter of the GOUC process and making it better. And as a practitioner, we really appreciate that help. Thank you very much. That said, I want to point out that my testimony is a bit of an outlier because I make the analogy here that we need to separate the signal from the noise. The signal in this case would be the position statements themselves. The noise would be the complaints about them being submitted too late. Now, my contention is that the position statements that we are now receiving from the Application Review Committee are basically worthless. So why should we wait more than a week or two for them? And I say they're worthless because of this reason. Probably no one on the screen now has been to more public hearings and worked more position statements in ARC meetings than I have, frankly, since 1972. And I'm telling you, those position statements do not meet the mark. The public executive order which set up the ARC says position statements shall do one of three things. They shall approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions. That's a pretty simple threshold to meet. They do not have to include what we get now, which is two, three, four, five pages of meaningless instructions like, "Follow the building code, follow the storm drainage guidelines, don't pollute our aquifer, don't destroy our reefs." It's just worthless. And I also contend that it's not only worthless for applicants because I tell you, there is not an applicant that relies on the ARC meeting itself or a position statement in order to move ahead. What we do is we learn the rules and regulations. We meet directly with the different utility and regulatory agencies, and we work out our problems and our coordination with them on a one-on-one basis. We do not use position statements. And I would also say, just from my own observation, we have mayors here who possibly would disagree. I don't think those position statements are helpful at all to mayors because when I go to public hearings, municipal planning council meetings, I hear questions at the micro level, okay? What is the stress on neighborhood, water, power, storm drainage, sewer? What is the stress on neighborhood traffic congestion? Where are the employees going to park? What are the operating hours of the place? What are the benefits that the developer is going to offer as a good neighbor contribution to both the neighborhood itself and the municipality as whole? Those are the questions that I hear at public hearings. And you know how they get answered? We answer them. The applicants answer them. And if we don't answer them, or we're not ready to answer them, we're going to get a negative resolution from the municipal planning council. That's the way the system works. It's a good system. So we account for the shortcomings of all those ARC position statements, which we're now arguing about how long we should give ARC members to submit. My point is that if you can't submit a position statement that says either approve, disapprove, or approve with conditions, you don't deserve to be on the ARC because it's pretty simple. Do the job. Do it quickly. One brief point of history here. The ARC, for those of you who may remember, is a stepchild of the Subdivision and Development Review Committee, which was started in 1972, led by Public Works because we regulatory and infrastructure agencies at that time, we're finding ourselves behind the curve on the new projects that are coming in, right? We hear about them for the first time when GOUC was talking about them, and that's too late. So we formed the SDRC, and I was a member of those first couple of years, in which case we brought in those applicants and we had them explain, "Hey, what's coming online? Where's it going to be? How much infrastructure do you need?" Good information for regulatory and infrastructure agencies such as that. Note the difference. The SDRC, forerunner of ARC, was set up for the government to listen and learn about what the private sector was bringing in. Now the SDRC is set up to tell us how to do things, and it just doesn't work. So in conclusion, I am saying thank you for getting this date-time limit nailed down, you know? Frankly, I don't care whether or not there's a fine. The statements are worthless anyway. I don't care whether there's a fine. But I would like the other matter addressed that ARC should stick with what the law and the executive orders tell ARC position statements to be and not complicated and take our time. And this three months, I tell you, three months, you're lucky in some cases, okay? I waited six months already for a position statement. And I tell you, I could have gone to the website or picked up the literature from that agency, and I would have learned the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swabe. For the record, colleagues, we've also received written testimony on this bill from Mr. Swabe, of course, from Carlos R. Antalan, who is a consultant, retired Department of Land Management Chief Planner, and Mr. Adrian Googly from Save Southern Guam. Mr. Googly, did you want to give verbal testimony on this bill? I can't hear you, Mr. Googly. Mr. Googly, I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry about that. Hopefully you can hear me now.
Yes.
I'm a resident. I'm interested in the public hearings and what the ARC reports are. And while it may be convoluted or misses the mark in what the ARC mission or responsibility is, as a citizen, I would love to read what the proposed project and how it's going to impact the community that I would be living in. So I'm in favor. I concur with this bill, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Googly. All right. So also for the record, we did receive a fiscal note from the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, BBMR. And in conclusion, they said that the legislation stipulates that the subject fine for noncompliance and the reporting requirement shall be a personal fine to the director, shall not be charged to the department or agency's operating budget. And so per the legislation, any funds received from such fine shall be deposited into the land and survey revolving fund. Although the proposed legislation provides a potential revenue stream in the form of administrative fines to be received by the LSRF, the Bureau notes that the legislation is administrative in nature and it serves as a deterrent for delays in the ARC's reporting obligations. All right, now, I just want to note for the record, I don't see members of the of the ARC here, the member agencies of that committee. But we did have an oversight committee, as alluded to earlier. I mean, we did have an oversight hearing on January 21st. And we, at that time, one of our findings was that, according to the Director of Land Management, most agencies have timely submissions of their position statements. However, he noted that the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Guam EPA, and Department of Agriculture have submitted statements after 60 days. They were there at the hearing, and their responses as to those delays range from funding issues, onerous workflow, manual processes, and shortage of staffing in specific planning departments. And you are all welcome to review that testimony that they provided at that time. All right. So we'll now be getting questions from the panel. And if you don't mind, I would just ask a couple to the GOUC. Well, our ARC members here, so actually, I don't have any questions. So if I could, I'll go to Vice Chair Sabina Perez.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. No questions either at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Joseph Augustine?
Thank you. No questions at this time.
All right. Thank you. Senator Taitikui, did you have any questions? Sorry, I should have called you first. I'm sorry.
No, Madam Chair. If I can, I'd like to go last. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do. Senator Brown? Senator Brown, could you unmute? Senator Brown, we can't hear you. Senator Brown, we still can't hear you. Can you press the mute? There you go. There. Senator Brown, can you press the mute button one more time, please? There you go. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we're kind of going around here. Can we remove this thing?
All right.
Sorry for the delay. You know, I'm looking at this bill, and I certainly understand the intent of our good senator in wanting to introduce this. But you know, it's kind of strange that we're in the legislative branch of government, but we're almost trying to manage the executive branch of government who's not executing their respective responsibilities. I mean, I understand that we're always, for those of us who've run department and agencies, we're always going to be in a situation where we never have enough resources. We never have enough personnel. We never have enough anything. But I think, I don't even know what to say. I mean, I understand reviewing of these projects, depending on their complexity, might take time and effort and things of that nature. But we're in a situation now where we're literally having to find directors again because they're being non-responsive to the public or to the applicants that are before them. I was at Guam EPA at a time when we had substantial development on Guam. We're not anywhere near right now, today, where we were 30 years ago. I mean, when we had the last major economic growth on the island, when we had Manengan in construction, when we had a number of the hotels in construction. We had like five or six golf courses in construction. I had two people in the planning division of Guam EPA. And yes, of course, it's not always as quick a process. But I mean, we're still able to get a number of those projects moving. So right now, today, we have nowhere near the level of construction in the local community. I'm sure a lot of activity on the base. I mean, I feel bad to ask the Director of Land Management, because he's the only one here, why the department and agencies are not as responsive because the fact that we need to find directors because of the inability of their department, for whatever reason, to perform their prescribed duties. I mean, what is this saying about our government and what are our priorities? You know, I had a former governor that asked me, "Joanne, tell me what you can do with what you have, not what you can't do." So at this point, can I ask, why are we in this situation? Because it's almost like we're having from the legislative branch of government to reach over to try to get an executive department and agencies to perform their mandated duties.
Well, since I'm the only member of the ARC that's here, you know, I can't really speak for you know, I can't really speak for them. At the oversight hearing that we had last week, I think those member agencies, you know, made their concerns known as to why they can't meet the deadline or why they weren't able to meet the deadlines.
Well, then is it a need that directors? I mean, if directors have to be fined, maybe they've got to restructure their departments to be responsive. I mean, I'd hate this to be the alternative. Because, you know, we all know the economic challenges that we're going through. And while I, you know, I have my issues with regards to quality development, there's no doubt there's going to be a need for continued growth on Guam. And if we do have projects on the table that are going to be a benefit to the community, you know, every effort we can make to make sure that these are quality developments and that they can be constructed in the right way and move forward, I think is what we certainly, I'm sure from a policy side in government, would love to see. Particularly if it's going to infuse more, you know, resources and opportunity for jobs and things of that nature in our community. And I certainly don't want to, you know, give the poor Director of Land Management a hard time because he happened to show up to the party. But it just really, I think it just leads to as to why the administration isn't taking a more proactive move, you know, to prioritize what resources they do have in these government, department, and agencies so that they can facilitate and get these reports out in a timely manner, whether it's for or against, or they have concerns that need to be addressed so that investors and developers can be able to respond to these issues and move forward with these projects. But I think the fact that this legislation is even before us and being proposed really, really shows that just at a most basic level in terms of our responsibilities within these respective department and agencies to perform our job, that that's not happening. Particularly at a time when the need to infuse additional economic resources in the community is so badly needed. So, Madam Speaker, I don't have any further question at this point, but I just felt a need to make that comment with regards to this issue in this bill that's been introduced. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Bloss, you are recognized. All right. Minority Leader, Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the testimony. Mr. Swaveley, that was very good. I appreciate your experience and all these years that you've been doing this since, I think you said, 1971 and so forth. And where are we, right, till this day? And of course, we have the COVID situation, but still, you know, it's compounded since that time. And alls we had to basically do is three things. And that's pretty clear: approve, disapprove, or approve with the position. Your statement about these reports that when you actually see, it's basically worthless. So I can understand. The clients that you represent have placed a lot of money and a lot of effort into bringing it this far. And it costs a lot of money for these companies to want to open up what they want to build and what they want to provide for the island. But yet, as my colleague has said, it seems like we're not providing the services that we should. And Director Borja, I remember during our last oversight hearing that you were very helpful where you were trying to point out, at least from the legislation side, maybe we had to look at something. I think you mentioned Public Law, is it 33209, where you have difficulty to get these committees together because of notices and so forth. But I was just wondering, now, since that time we talked, didn't we have an executive order from the governor to help expedite this process where we don't even have to have open government for these type of meetings? Would that surprise, or you still need us to do something on reference to the public law? If you don't mind answering that question, please.
Well, the executive orders, you know, for PCOR conditions have eased restrictions on congregations. And as a matter of fact, I believe we have a meeting scheduled, a public hearing scheduled for Mr. Swaveley's application on March 11. But the executive order is the restriction, ease the restrictions on those meetings for the public hearings. Insofar as Public Law 33209, that sectioning, there was the one actually that Senator Telo Titigui is trying to amend. And my comment at that time, with the lack of teeth, was that the language was "any" and "all", you know, I suppose as to all position statements coming in. Number one, and number two, that the language was, to the maximum extent possible, you know, the agency submitting position statements, you know, shall be present at those municipal hearings. So those were the comments that I had on Public Law 33209.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Borja. But was there not an executive order that says you don't have to do these public notices? And you can conduct your meetings? I think that was one of the first or second ones that came out.
You still need to do the public notices. On this public notice issue, we actually waited. We actually waited for guidance from the legislature. We felt that if the legislature could have these video Zoom hearings to develop a law except testimony, then we would be good with that. However, on the case of a conditional use permit or the public hearings out, they have to be in the municipality. And number one, number two, I don't know what kind of denial of access we would be doing by having a Zoom meeting. You know, not everybody has access to the computer software and the computer hardware to be able to attend these meetings by video conferencing. So that was our concern, was the notice factor. And throughout the statutes concerning zoning and GLUC, notice is very, very prominent in there. And that's what, you know, held us back on those public hearings relative to Public Law 33209. And the statute concerning the notice factor for conditional use permits. The timing is just really long. You have to confirm the date with the mayor's office and then work back 25 days in order to be able to process the certified mail letters out to the surrounding landowners. And like I stated in that hearing, 500 feet in Tamuning, it's not the same as 500 feet of owners down in Maleso and where most of these applications are from.
I appreciate that, Mr. Borja. Thank you for that. But, you know, there's just something that's got to be done, like Mr. Swaveley is saying. This situation's been since 1972 and it doesn't seem to have progressed much. But, you know, otherwise, we just can't keep on operating this way. And we need to take some measures really quick. So hopefully with these sessions, we can come up with a better solution there. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. So before I allow the sponsor to ask questions and close on the bill, I just wanted to extend it. If there's any mayor who wanted to ask questions or say anything on this particular bill, so just wave your hand. All right, if not, then, okay, then we'll recognize Senator Titigui. You may complete your testimony on the bill.
Again, Sujus Mossi, Madam Chair and Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this measure. As I mentioned, this measure was introduced in the 35th Guam Legislature and passed by the majority of the senators. And at the time, I guess those senators who were skeptical about the bill was, I guess, because it was $1,000 fine. And I know Senator Snogging had concerns about that when he voted no on the bill. But we've lowered that amount to 250. And just for the record, there have been many fines given to other agencies and departments. I mean, let alone, there's a CRER report that's required on the 21st of every month. If it's not met, that the Director of BBMR will pay a fine of $250 if that report is not given to us. So if we're putting fines on agencies that are required to provide information to the legislature, then we should be able to do that for the public as well, especially the public who invest and take, well, not only invest, but sacrifice to open up businesses, to make, you know, to build buildings, to do renovations. Time is money for each one of them. I don't know how many times I've heard, and that's why this bill came up. How many times people have lost money waiting for reports to come out? And how many investors have decided to leave Guam because they couldn't even get a simple report such as this? Senator Brown mentioned, I mean, she hit it on the nose when she explained, we have to be here today to do something like this, to put fire under the feet. And Mr. Director, if I had, you know, one of those rewind tapes, you know, right now on what you said during the January 21st meeting, you literally said, because you wrote the bill, 33-dash, the bill that was passed, that created this legislation. But unfortunately, you said, and I quote, that the maximum extent possible you agree does not have the teeth. It needs to push them forward. In the meantime, there is nothing requiring any of the ARC to provide their reports in a timely manner at all. This will do that. $250 is enough money to have an individual get up and get those reports. Forty-seven reports still have not been put through. And this is money that's not going into our economy. I agree with Mr. Swaveley, who said, make it two weeks. Actually, I think there was a comment he made, but he was putting the testimony together. Just make it two weeks, because it's insignificant in a report. I think that's something we need to look into. Actually, you know, thank you, Mr. Swaveley, for that comment you made. Because if that's what's really happening at these municipal council meetings, where I know that Mayor Savaris was even shaking her head yes when it comes to the questions that are being asked by the public, that's not part of any ARC committee. That's something that needs to be addressed too as well. So I think we should start somewhere. And that somewhere is to put fire and the defeat of these members in the ARC. By the way, if I'm not mistaken, in the 35th Guam Legislature, we also passed a fine to people who don't show up for, I'm trying to remember if it was Department of Education or one of the boards, that there was a fine implemented in place for board members. And that bill passed. But this is even more important. Look at our economy, where we are today. Special funds are not coming in. They're projected in $30 million shortfall. So this is a very important piece of legislation. I mean, and it's very simple. There might be a lot of questions, because it's only one thing, very simple. If they don't provide the report in time, which we've extended it from 30 days to 45 days, with, by the way, allows them two opportunities, a 14-day extension, two different times, as long as the Commissioner of the ARC approves it, giving them a little bit more time. So it's as simple as that. So I'd like to continue what Mr. Borja did when he first wrote this bill. But now we're going to give teeth to the maximum extent possible, we'll now say, $250 fine to each member who does not provide that report in a timely manner. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And I thank everyone who's here to testify. Sujus Mossi.
Sujus Mossi, Senator Titigui. That concludes the hearing on Bill 38-36COR. We've moved to the second item on our agenda, which is Bill Number 14-36COR. Senator Jocelyn Augustine, you may introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And witness to all, I thank Speaker Trillay for hosting this public hearing for Bill 14-36. Bill 14-36COR purposes to allow the Guam Land Use Commission to expedite the application process for the temporary workers' housing facilities and to mitigate community impacts of about 2,500 temporary workers that we are expecting to arrive on island to assist with the construction of the military building, build up, and during the, amid this COVID-19 pandemic. The application for the temporary workers' housing facility has been delayed for about a year, is what my understanding, which resulted in privately housing the first 1,500 temporary workers that have arrived within northern and central parts of our island. Negative impacts have been bestowed onto our community as many local families are being denied an option to affordable housing. Bill 14-36 is a solution to, in consultation with the Governor's Office, to mitigate the negative impacts imposed by the delay of the application process to other temporary workers' housing facility. As we are being assisted by the temporary workers, we should also give them a sense of stability as they work on federal, private, and government Guam projects. I look forward to hearing any testimony against or for the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senators Snogging. There's several people signed up to testify. Will we begin again with the Guam Land Use Commission Chairperson, Dr. Anita Borja Enriquez?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, members of the committee and members of the 26th Guam Legislature. Thank you for this opportunity. I do have present with me the Executive Secretary, Mr. Joseph Borja of the Guam Land Use Commission, who also serves as Director of the Department of Land Management. I just want to note that there are six applications that are outstanding, two of which are scheduled for a public hearing through the Municipal Planning Council. And the other four are still pending a full review. And we just are here to listen to other testimonies that are being presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairperson Enriquez. Director Borja, did you want to add any testimony to this bill, on this bill?
Okay. Yes, just a little correction. We do have six applications for temporary workers' housing. Four of them are in the preliminary application interview stage, and two of them are awaiting a public hearing. And we provided that information to the committee. The Department of Land Management and the Planning Division, it's always good to have a plan for something foreseeable. Unfortunately, a pandemic and its effects could not be foreseen, especially as it relates to government services. So we make efforts to adjust and still maintain our mission and mandates as subject to existing law. Under the pandemic conditions, the Department of Land Management supports the intent of the bill. And these are why. Number one, the location is certified by land management when, during the preliminary application interview, that the project is in an M1 zone, the only zone where temporary workers' housing are allowed. And that issue has already been verified and certified by land management by the acceptance of that application. Number two is that there are two major issues in any application. Major issue, number one, is public safety. The bill still requires Guam Fire Department clearance. It doesn't negate that. Secondly, is public health. The bill still requires Department of Public Health clearance, Department of Public Health and Social Services clearance. So those are not bypassed. The only comment I want to make on the other parts of the bill is that you have to address the public notice issue, because there is a statute in there that says, no land use applications will be approved by the commission not having met the sign and the public notice requirements. I'm paraphrasing that a little bit. But basically, the sign and the notice requirements that still have to be maintained. And those, I believe, if that can be added into the bill to make sure that there is some sort of a public notice, especially to the surrounding landowners, who are probably also M1-zone properties. But still, you know, to fulfill that notice requirement, because throughout the GLUC statutes and the zoning statutes, notice plays a pretty prominent part. So at least if that could be addressed on the public notice issue, I think that would suffice on the notice issue to satisfy the intent of the legislation. And again, it is during PCOR readiness time. I'm not sure if the authors want to amend the bill to also include other natural disasters, which may preclude this issue. But certainly, the pandemic condition of readiness, restrictions placed on the public assembly, congregation, social distancing, and things of that sort, certainly that played a big part in having to hold these public hearings, number one. And number two, conditional use permits have a special notice factor in the law. But the law also states that the commission may require the applicant to do the LUPRA part, what we call the LUPRA part in this process, the land use property, what the, you know, surrounding landowners are and like that. So there is already a statute that the commission may require the applicant to do that. applicant, to do that, uh, part of the public notice. The public notice requirement under a conditional land use permit, permit is, uh, pretty much , uh, onerous in the sense that, uh, that notice factor has to be either by personal notice, walking up to the person, identifying, uh, who they are, identifying yourself, almost like serving a subpoena. That's one way to do it, personal notice. Uh, that's pretty tough for the department to do. Or, uh, notice by a certified mail. And certified mail is not like, uh, preparing an envelope and, uh, putting a stamp on it and mailing it. Uh, we actually have to, if there are fifty landowners in that, uh, process, then we would have to research who those landowners are and then, uh, put up, make up the, um, make up the, um, certified mail forms, those little pink forms for each one of those letters. Take it up, line up, uh, physically at the post office and, uh, get to the counter and, uh, absorb the bad looks of the people behind you because you've got really fifty things to process. So, uh, I hope the legislature will also take a look at that and make the, uh, public notice factor, uh, at least consistent, uh, you know, across the board for all types of application and not, uh, you know, uh, impose something that is really, really hard to, uh, implement, especially during these COVID times to, uh, to do that certified mailing notice. Uh, other than that, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Speaker, uh, again, the location of these temporary workers' housing is in an M-one zone. That's certified by land management when we accept the, uh, application. And it is the only zone where temporary workers' housing, uh, are allowed. And then the public safety issue, uh, the bill still requires that it go through the Guam Fire Department. And the public health issue, the bill still requires, uh, Department of Public Health and Social Services, uh, clearance. And of course, uh, like I said, the, uh, public notice issue, I think, uh, has to be hopefully standardized or, uh, made, uh, you know, in line with all the other application things like that. Now, conditional uses, uh, it's, it's, you know, you really have to, uh, notice this because if you are in a commercial zone and the guy next to you is doing a commercial, uh, facility, then, you know, it's, it's, it's what it is. It's something that you could do also. But on, uh, temporary workers' housing, it's, it's a conditional permit. It's not rezoning the property, but it is M-one, and it does, uh, provide for an influx of, uh, density of people in your neighborhood. So at least that notice, I think, uh, should be standardized, or at least let the community know of, uh, of, you know, what's happening next door, you know? That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director Borja. We will now hear from Mr. Daniel Swaverly.
Thank you, Speaker. Again, have, have the other committee members and, uh, accompanying and, and present senators seen my testimony? So I'll just paraphrase it and not read it.
We've shared the Google Drive folder for this hearing with all the testimonies that we received prior, so, uh, it should be available to them. I'm not sure if they've read it all, so you, you might want to go through.
Okay, so, uh, nonetheless, I'll still paraphrase it because questions and answers will probably bring up everything. I'll do it really quickly. I very much appreciate Director Joe's, uh, testimony here. He not only, uh, saw the intent of it, uh, but he added some meaningful suggestions to improve it. Thank you for that. Yes, we have, uh, I say six or seven applications that have been in the process for the last six to ten months, except with minor exceptions during the last week or so, and none have gone anywhere. Now, the options here are this: either we put these workers, and I count, by my count, by taking a survey from contractors, by my count, we have, uh, well over two thousand H-two-B workers coming in for sure during the first three quarters of this year, all right? So we can either put them in temporary worker housing facilities, or the law allows us to put them in, uh, apartments, or for rent condos, or for rent single-family dwelling units. This is a very imperfect, uh, situation for us. If we, uh, reject Bill Fourteen thirty-six, then we're going to get two thousand-plus workers among at least five hundred apartments throughout, I'm guessing, Jigo, Dedero, Manila, Baragada, Timuning, because those are the municipalities closest to our work sites. That's where we want to keep our workers. Uh, and if we approve Fourteen thirty-six, then, uh, we, we, we lose the full public transparency of public hearings. Uh, listen, I'm, I'm at conflict with this, okay? I'm, I'm a community planner by background. I'm at conflict with this. But when you, when you weigh the options here, it's still better to just move ahead with this fast-tracking now during COVID with those safeguards in place, as Director Joe, uh, just, just, uh, just iterated. And let's, let's, let's go for it. Because the option of going into those apartments, you have to think about this now. Over two thousand young, unaccompanied males, well-paid, no private transportation, yeah? Think of those parking lots in the, in the weekends and the eve, and the weekend evenings, all right? It's a sociological disaster. We can avoid that. Again, not perfect, but it's not permanent either. It's just now to let those that are stuck in the system move ahead, the building permit, occupancy permit, public health, sanitary permit, public health, dormitory permit. I might add, however, one, uh, item that you had on your list, uh, uh, Speaker, was the Serrano application. This law would not cover Serrano. This law only covers, uh, temporary worker housing facilities going in existing M-one zones. We're not doing any rezoning here. Sorry about that for them, right? So that's how I get, that's how I get six applications ready, not, and not, not more. That's, you know, that's how I see it. And, and, and I hope, I hope the mayors agree, and, uh, I hope the senators agree. This is an urgent need. Workers are already here. We are already placing some in apartments, okay? This isn't, this isn't something coming in the future. This started last week. It's going to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Swaverly. Uh, could you just, uh, clarify for the record? Uh, are you, uh, is your testimony on behalf of yourself, or is it on the, are you representing anyway?
Uh, the letters from Ian, I, I represent Black Construction, which has two, uh, two applications, uh, one for three hundred and fifty workers, one for six hundred and seventy-two workers in the middle of Harmon Industrial Park, not far from their headquarters, actually. And I also represent Ian Construction, which has an application for a hundred and thirty-four workers. Uh, that's, uh, in the Bella Road M-one industrial park area of, of Baragada. That's for these. Previously, I also, uh, represented Fargo Construction and Reliable.
Aren't there two, um, Black Construction pending projects?
Yes, there are. One is for three hundred and fifty, and one is for six hundred and seventy-two.
Okay. And, um, Mr. Borja, could you please confirm the six, uh, projects? Did that include the zone change for Serrano? Or are there six, uh, conditional use applications pending? Director Borja?
Yes, there are six pending, but, uh, Dan Swaverly is right. The Serrano one is, uh, predicated on rezoning the property to M-one from commercial, I believe. Yeah, they have commercial property. So that's a tandem application, and that's where I, uh, submitted, uh, both applications to your office, that if the, uh, rezoning doesn't happen, then the, uh, workers' housing barracks is, uh, out of the question, at least for that application, because it's not M-one.
All right. So in that case, are there only five pending, uh, conditional use applications for temporary workforce housing that might be affected by this bill?
Uh, yes. All those other four that, uh, Mr. Swaverly mentioned, those were submitted during, uh, P-COR one, and, uh, those are still awaiting the preliminary application review. But I believe Mr. Swaverly's application is for a total of seven hundred and fifty, I believe. I think you added a supplement to, uh, the original one. The original one, I believe, was five hundred, Dan, and then you submitted a supplemental to make it a, an additional two fifty, I believe. Yeah.
May I respond?
Yes.
The clarification on that, uh, Joe, is that the first, the first application took over the formal, the former Paco Construction Company Temporary Worker Housing Facility, which was already valid for four hundred. So when we went to seven fifty, we're actually adding three fifty, and that's the number I used as far as the application is concerned.
So noted. Okay.
All right. So you both agree that there are five pending conditional use projects before the Guam Land Use Commission?
Relative to temporary workers' housing, yes.
Yes.
Because there are other conditional use, uh, projects.
Yeah, sorry, uh, temporary workforce housing only. Mr. Swaverly, five or six? Five?
No, I can only confirm those which I'm personally representing, and that's three.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. We will now hear from, um, former Senator William Flores.
How buenos en half a day, and thank you, uh, Speaker, for allowing us to, uh, appear before the, the legislature to discuss this bill. Um, you know, we, like, I haven't done as many, um, representations in front of the G L U C as Mr. Swaverly has, but we're very familiar with this because we have done some significant one. The particular that, uh, is facing us here, of course, has been documented in terms of the pandemic and, um, the situation that land management is faced with in having to deal with this for much of the year from, you know, from, uh, far off, from a hands-off, uh, perspective. We represent non-corporation. Uh, there are two applications with non-corporation. Uh, actually, they pronounce it non. Uh, one of it is application. The apartment, uh, building right next to the M I T, and pre-used as mission, is, the application before the Land Use Commission is an administrative action. Uh, it was used previously by Guam Shipyard and, uh, as, uh, temporary workforce housing, and now is being used by non-corporation. But upon the advice of the Department of Land Management, we submitted that, or the, uh, the owner submitted that to make sure that the papers are all in place because, uh, apparently there was, uh, there was no issue with the use, is my understanding, but there was some issue with some of the paperwork, so that was submitted. The second, um, application is for non-corporation in an existing M-one zone in T-ZEN, uh, to convert their existing warehouse, uh, into workforce housing. And that application, uh, is one of the ones that's before the Department of Land Management or within the Department of Land Management. And that application, uh, proposes to convert an existing warehouse, which was rated for two hundred and twenty mile an hour winds because it was built to military standards, um, into workforce housing with the, with the, all the amenities and the requirements normally issued by the regulatory agencies and by G L U C. So there's recreation, there's, uh, you know, all the medical, uh, medical access issues, transportation issues are within that application. The problem that non-corporation has is that this application was submitted in, uh, July, I believe July or August, um, in anticipation of, we were hoping, I, I don't know if you remember, we were hoping, one, by the end of the, uh, end of twenty twenty, that didn't happen, obviously. But now we're into the situation where they were awarded, uh, another task order for the military. Now, here, I don't like the military buildup, but because the military buildup is happening, we, outside of fence, have a responsibility to try to make our community as safe and as efficient as possible, um, to accommodate this buildup. So the, the issue here, which has gone through several G L U Cs past, is that there has to be an organized system where temporary workforce housing doesn't intrude into the villages, it doesn't, as Dan and Mr. Borja have alluded to, into, you know, the neighborhoods and affect the quality of life in the neighborhoods. So in keeping with that, of course, I support the, uh, I really appreciate the fact, uh, temporary workforce housing was limited to M-one, conditional uses in an M-one zone. So our issue again, uh, is not whether or not we want to comply, we will comply with, uh, uh, with all the requirements. And, you know, going back to the previous public hearing, the public hearing just before this, one of the issues that Mr. Swaverly mentioned was that some of the, uh, comments from the A R C are not germane, um, and I, I agree with that, primarily because by the time, um, this application reaches the G L U C, we would have done a lot of due diligence with the regulatory agencies and may or may not agree with them, but at least we know what their conditions are going to be. So we're, uh, we've already primed and, uh, prepared our, our clients for that. Uh, one of the big issues is, um, G W A, uh, Guam Water Works, and this is something that probably is for another, another issue. Guam Water Works requires that before anybody does anything, if you're going to put in a new water, uh, water and sewer service, you pay an addition to the S D C charge. Sometimes G W A, uh, will require people to put in structure in addition to the S D C charge. And the way we on the outside, when I say outside, outside of G W A, um, uh, outside of G W A read that, is that that's what the S D C charge is for. The only reason why I mention that is because that is the kind of issue that cannot be addressed, um, by the A R C. That's the kind of issue that has to be addressed between, uh, the client and the regulatory agency. And the same goes for D P W and, you know, the others. So in short, um, and in order not to sound like, one of the things that, uh, the mayors mentioned to me is that they were really concerned about that this, uh, this bill would preclude the requirements to notify the mayors. Um, I read the bill, I don't see anything there that would preclude the requirements to notify the mayors. I think, uh, any prudent, anyway, any prudent applicant would notify the mayors upon submitting, or even prior to submitting their application to the Land Use Commission. And, uh, we've done that in this case, and I think you'll hear from the mayor, so some of their concerns, uh, you know? But in, in all, I support this bill. Uh, I support this bill only for the applications that are pending there because of the pandemic situation, and because really, for all intents and purposes, this was out of land management's hands. Land management, you know, and obviously no one saw this pandemic coming, and no one knew how long and how long still we're going to be in this situation. So I, I thank the authors of the bill, and I support the bill. And again, uh, unfortunately, because of the military buildup, we outside the fence are forced to now make sure that whatever the we have to be able to in ordinary fashion in that bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Flores. We have mayors who are signed up to testify, but I just wanted to clarify because you've, you've said that, uh, you don't think this bill would waive any of the other requirements, yet. The bill says, "Whenever a P-COR restricts public assembly, G L U C conditional use applications for the development of temporary workforce housing shall meet only the requirements of..." And then, so they list particular requirements, but, um, I read that to exclude the other requirements. Uh, so I made a list of those, including the A R C, uh, Application Review Committee, uh, review, the written notice of public hearing by certified mail, as talked about by the director, the notice of public hearing, the sign on the property, the notice of public hearing in the newspaper, the municipal public hearing itself in the village, and the resolution in support of the municipal, or by the Municipal Planning Council, and the G L U C action, because the bill would allow, if you comply with the, with the provisions that are included, then you, you would go straight to the building permit, uh, section. Is that how you read the bill, Senator Flores?
Well, the thing is, is about the mayors. I don't know the exact law, but I believe there are executive orders that have never been, or that says that any capital improvement projects or any projects of this type in any municipality has to be cleared by the mayor. And I don't think that's in the G L U C. I think that is a preceding, many, many years back, law or E O that was, uh, and so that, I don't see that as being waived. Second, um, in terms of the regulatory agencies, as Mr. Swaverly mentioned, all of the comments from the regulatory agencies, the ones that review permits, they are all reviewed at the permit stage. So, uh, by, you know, So it, by, you know, so I don't see how that, other than pre-planning, I don't see how that part is waived. Now, you do have a point on the public notice issue, but I, I assume based on Mr. Borja's testimony that that was going to be addressed by the, you know, by the author maybe of the legislation court. So that's why I didn't speak to that. But that's what I meant, is primarily in terms of notification to the mayors and the municipalities and the regulatory, those are already covered by existing rules and regulations or law.
Yeah, all right. Well, okay, well, I'll, we'll, we'll discuss that later, but yeah, when I read this and I checked with our legal, it's pretty much, that's the, that's the issue. Does it waive every other requirement except for those listed or, or not? All right, we'll continue with Mayor Luis Rivera, Mayor Timoney, Mayor Luis.
Half a day, everyone. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving us the opportunity. You know, I just want everyone to know that we do have a Municipal Planning Council meeting this evening, and I did talk to them, try to get information, you know, so that I can bring it back to you today. And, you know, they're, they have been reviewing the bill and the law, and they, they kindly asked that we, we give our arbitral testimony tomorrow, you know, in regards to it. But, you know, I love all the companies, they, they've helped out, you know, a great deal in the community, and they, you know, that is an M1 zone. But, you know, I also want to share that in the past, with the fast-tracking that has been going on, it, it didn't do a lot of justice, you know, and because property owners felt that they, you know, they were not informed. So that's why we want to make sure that all the stakeholders or the property owners surrounding these businesses are informed. Yeah, it's not us personally, for me to give my answer, because I, you know, I'm here with you all today. It's the, the concerns that we have from everyone else. And so again, we will be addressing this at our first Municipal Planning Council meeting for this term. We will be addressing it today and will submit a written testimony. This is Marcy.
Thank you, Mayor Rivera. Mayor Rudy Paco, Guam Montiel to Mighty. Mayor Paco.
Good evening, I mean, good morning, good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm not here to burn any bridges, but I totally agree with what Mayor Rivera said about the stakeholders and to notify, I mean, the certified letter to the neighborhood. The only issue that I'm having right now is I have the homeless up there ready. We talked about water issues. Would that affect my community around that neighborhood? I, I'm not going to say that I disapprove this bill 1436, or I approve it, but maybe we can approve it with conditions. Just give me a time to have a, a meeting with my Municipal Planning Council, because I cannot make that judgment on my own. It has to go through my Municipal Planning Council. You know, what's the use of having a Municipal Planning Council if I'm going to say I approve it? I hope you understand where I'm coming from. I have nothing against this bill 1436, but give me a time to at least, the benefit of the doubt, to bring it up to my Municipal Planning Council. Okay?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Paco. We'll now hear from Mayor June Gloss of Baragada.
Half a day, Madam Speaker, and of course, fellow senators and my colleagues, Joe Borja and, and all that are present. We appreciate and thank you for inviting us to join into this Zoom meeting. The areas that are affected right now for Baragada, they are on M1 zone already. And as I concur to both the mayors, that of course, we still need to let our residents know about the, you know, what is going to be built. Actually, it's built already on some areas, and especially the one in Tizen. The thing about it is that we need to inform and that in, in this case, it is an M1, but we also need our Municipal Planning Council to, to approve. The vice mayor and I cannot just approve this alone. And, and something like this, I mean, because it happened in the pandemic, you know, nobody deserves or, or, because these things happen, but we need to do it respectfully to inform our residents. And I, the area with, with the M1 zone that's affected for Baragada is in Tizen. There are no residents really there. It's tucked into the old DMV building. The other one that was affected is the one up in the Bello. That is an M1 already tucked into the corner as well. But if you can allow us to meet with our MPC next week, we just had our swearing in today, so we can meet and then we will give our testimonial at that time. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Gloss. We will now hear from Mayor Melissa Savaris of Dedito.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. I agree with a lot of the discussions that both Mr. Borja and Mr. Swaby have presented earlier. Of course, we want to, are the, these operators or these construction companies to be good neighbors. As Mr. Swaby said, you know, we actually have a lot of these apartment buildings, complexes that are already in our neighborhoods that are actually being used by several construction companies as their barracks. The concern that I have is that we want to make sure that all of the operations for the workforce housing is contained within the property. Mr. Borja brought up the public safety issues with Guam Fire Department and Department of Public Health. We want to maintain that sanitation is always maintained in the property, within the property. And then as well as the beautification of the property, we, he mentioned the Soriano property earlier. We have not actually, we've had discussions in our Municipal Planning Council meeting about the Soriano property, but we were waiting for ARC documents to come in to see anything, any reports from maybe Department of Public Works because they're fronting Route 3 or even GWA. We know that infrastructure is available within the, the property, and our concern is that they are very close to the entrance of Ukudu High School. And with that, you know, I know Soriano property is actually, had applied for a conditional use. And of course, we, you know, our Municipal Planning Council actually just had this discussion with this particular application. And, you know, we agreed that, you know, once we receive the ARCs, like I said, particularly on GWA and, and DPW, we would have provisions to have them adopt the roadway fronting their property and make sure that it's safe, because, like I said, it's right in front, right at the entrance before Ukudu High School. So we want to make sure that it's safe for them and their, their buses to get in and out, but at the same time that it's not going to impede, there's visibility for both them and the, the families going into Ukudu High School. I actually support the bill with conditions that we, like my colleague said and, and Mr. Borja, that notices need to, to go out. I know that in several, a lot of issues were certified mail. You know, you have an address that's registered with both Department of Land Management and Department of Revenue and Taxation. However, nobody comes to pick up that mail. And, you know, I have a, a public hearing that's scheduled for February that we discussed with land management, because they need that time period to identify the property owners. If, in the case with properties where there are no neighbors, I know we have signage, but if you don't have the immediate property owners traveling in that area, they will not see the sign, right? So I am in favor of fast-tracking, but still having, you know, the, the pertinent agencies as well as a Municipal Planning Council review the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Savaris. In the interest of transparency, because the mayors are very familiar with the projects that are, are proposed for their villages. Myself, I had to kind of research it, and the senators, I'm not sure if you're all aware, so I would just like to very quickly put up some slides of, as to the list of the projects and where they are, just so you get the idea. And so we could just begin with the first slide. All right, so this is a list, and as we heard earlier, the first Okay, so the first item on this list is a rezoning. So it's not, it's not a conditional land use or conditional use application on an M1 property. It's not yet M1. So that one may not be affected by this bill at this time unless the zone is changed to M1. That was the Soriano project, and this one is in front of the Ukudu High School. Okay, so I'm just going to give you a minute on this list. These are the, the different projects, but we'll go forward to the, the maps, I mean, the, the pictures. Next slide. All right, so this is the Soriano in front of Ukudu High School here in the blue square. Ukudu High is the, the white, big development there. Soriano would be along Route 3. Again, this is a rezoning, so not necessarily affected by this bill unless it is rezoned. So next slide. That was for 30, that was only for 30 workers' housing. Next slide. This one is this one is a project by Non Inc. This is in Tizen. On the right, you will see San Vicente Church. And so if you go across San Vicente Church, across Route 8 into Tizen, of course, this is the one that Mr. Swaby described as the, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Flores decide, described early, earlier. Yes, so this is for 852 workers, Baragada, Tizen. Next slide. Okay, so this is Harmon Industrial Park. And as we see on the, on the bottom, you've got Harmon Industrial Park Road in yellow going across. And on top in yellow, we've got, you know, Ellie's Auto Shop, that's the hamburger road. So between hamburger road and Harmon Industrial Park Road are, there are two black construction projects. So in red, where the arrow is pointing in red, this would be one. And this one, I, if I'm correct, Mr. Swaby, this would be for, it, it already houses 700, I mean, 400, and it would be for an additional 350, so a total of 750 in the red triangle.
Correct.
Yes, and then a kind of diagonal from there and adjacent to the Harmon Industrial Park is, go to the next slide. Is, is the other in red now in the red triangle, that is the other black construction project in Harmon Industrial Park for 672. Okay, so you see the one in the red, with the red lines? That's the one we talked about in the previously screened, and, and then the red triangle for the 672, and then the Harmon Industrial Park Road, it's adjacent to. Okay, next slide. All right, this is in Dedito on this shows in yellow, Tun Pedro Maria Beneventi Street. This street comes off of Bello Road, which of course comes off of Route 16. So you go from Route 16, from DMV, off, off from Bello Road, you turned on Tun Pedro Maria Beneventi Street towards Midpac, IDI, those are, those are, you know, in, on the street. And the, this is a project by Ian Corporation. It would house 135 people. This is in Baragada, sorry, it's called Baragada, not Dedito. Next slide. This is the other project by Non Inc. in, in Mighty. You see Benson on the top, they mentioned Payless, Mighty Payless, and the, the current homeless shelter, of course, those would be routing, I mean, fronting Route 8. And you see Route 8 in yellow, and then the arrow is pointing to the subject lot, which is proposed to house 84 workers. This is a project by Non Inc. All right, thank you. That's all I've got. The slides. Go back to where we were on our agenda and
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could I just make a correction for the record?
Please.
Hamburger Road doesn't exist anymore. It was called Hamburger Road because it was McDonald's at one end and I believe Burger King at the other end. But more importantly, that road has been renamed in honor of a former senator, so it's really Adrian C. Sanchez Road.
Oh, thank you for correcting me. Thank you very much, Director Borja. All right. All right, we're going to hear now from Mr., sorry, Mr. Flores. Yeah, would you like to, Senator Flores?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just to clarify, the, the facility, you know, next to Mighty Payless is an existing facility. There are already temporary workers in there, there have been for several years. So in this, it can be considered primarily an administrative, an administrative, what's application? And really, in terms of the urgency of the matter, this one is not, is not really urgent because it's administrative. So we don't even mind if this one goes, is excluded. I mean, it's in there, but we don't mind if this one is excluded and goes through the regular process.
All right, thank you.
Just for the record.
Okay, thank you. So we're now here, we've got one more signed up to testify, that would be Adrian Bogley from State Southern Guam. Adrian? Mr. Bogley?
Buenos dias, thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. I provided my written testimonies, if you don't mind. I hope you can indulge me and I'll read it. Here it goes. Okay, I am Adrian Bogley. I'm testifying as a privacy citizen, but I also, I am also the vice chair for State Southern Guam. I do not concur with Bill 14-36 as written. This bill proposes a very dangerous precedent to waive the regular GLUC permitting process for Temporary Workers' Housing Facilities during a pandemic, and specifically calls out the Department of Defense buildup projects as a catalyst to waive a process in our zoning law that is in place to ensure the protection of the public's interests, safety, and welfare. Amending our zoning law for Temporary Workforce Housing applications when a PCOR restricts public assembly is contrary to this process. Land use planning is a deliberate process, and the buildup involves long-range planning at our national and local governments. Our GLUC, ARC agencies, and those contractors providing temporary workforce to the buildup projects also need to plan accordingly and not circumvent or short-circuit this process. As a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, we have adapted to our new working environment and embraced technology to accomplish our work. Our government agencies are also adapting and doing the same. Case in point, this public hearing is being conducted using Zoom for those wishing to provide live testimony. This technology or similar alternative This technology or similar alternative can also be used for the GLUC application review and permitting process. If this bill becomes law, it will create unintended consequences where land developers and other interest groups will seek to amend our zoning law that promote their interests. I have witnessed the GLUC application review and conditional approval for a controversial project that residents oppose. Eventually, the GLUC's conditional approval and notice of action were revoked, but only after two years of opposing the project's approval and the filing of a lawsuit to stop the project. Our island residents should not have to resort to these actions. Our government is responsible for protecting the public's interests, safety and welfare. Those are three pillars and if you can picture, they form a tripod. And if you remove any one of those legs to a tripod, you have a high risk for the other two pillars to crumble. We talked about safety and health being covered during this fast track process, but it eliminates the public's interests. This bill proposes to do the opposite and will deny us, the people of Guam, our fundamental right to voice our concerns. Thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to provide testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bogley. We've also received, the committee's also received written testimony from Leonard Kai from the general manager of Black Construction in support of the bill, from Mr. Jack Kim Corondo Corporation in support of the bill, Mr. Ian Chong, President Ian Corporation in support of the bill. We received a fiscal note from BBMR, which in summary says that the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon any funds of the government of Guam. We, we received legal bureau opinion that says that Section 2 of the bill creates an exception for new applications for the development of temporary workforce housing during any pandemic condition of readiness, which restricts public assembly. This exception would, among other things, A, remove applications from going before the Guam Land Use Commission, B, remove applications from being subject to the review process of the Agency Review Committee, and C, limit the review of such applications to compliance only with 21 GCA 61309C 4B 1 through 4 and requirements imposed by the Department of Land Management. She put that in quotes. Currently, conditional use permits are sub, the temporary workforce housing conditional use permits are subject to the ARC and GLUC process, which includes a public hearing pursuant to 21 GCA 61303. The bill's removal of GLUC and ARC from the review process without specific reference to current mandates under the law may create ambiguity as to whether or not applications for conditional use permits will still require public hearings. The committee should confirm if the intent of the bill is to remove the public hearing requirement for the temporary workforce housing conditional use permits. And make, of course, make amendments accordingly. All right, and so of course, in our research of which projects this might affect, we were told about the ones that we showed here today. Those mayors were informed and we tried to inform the mayor's council as well. And we were also told, just from, I think, Mr. Swabe, that there may be other projects that depending how long the pandemic goes on, that's, that's all we know for now. All right, and so at that point, I'm going to open this up for questions from my colleagues, beginning with the author of the bill, Senator Joseph Augustine.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Speaker. If I can be last and we have everybody, then I can close it. Thank you.
Oh, sure, okay. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So yeah, looking at the projects, there is, I guess, the ones in Baragada, I believe. Maybe the one in Harmon Industrial Park, there's like 800, 700 workers all in one, one building, right? And you know, it's good to see that you still kept sewage and fire and Department of Public Health oversight. But I guess my concern, you know, considering that we're still, we still have yet to recover from this pandemic, you know, as far as the, you know, spread of the disease. You know, my concern is about whether this would potentially, you know, exacerbate our state, our state in regards to the pandemic. Because we all, generally speaking, you know, contagion spreads when there's concentration, a high concentration of workers. And I understand that, you know, we don't want to diminish the supply. I mean, we definitely need to increase the supply of housing. And we don't want to exacerbate that condition as well. So yeah, my concern is in regards to, you know, the health of our community with those housing. If we're going to waive the, you know, specifications for the, you know, the sleeping quarters, toilets, showering facilities, I mean, what are the precautions that we can put in place to prevent the spread? I guess that question.
Senator, yeah, oh. There is a, in the bill, it says that certain provisions will be enforced, except for these provisions that will be enforced. And I would, I would like to read those out, I think that might. Or Mr. Borja, do you have those in front of you right now? I think that will cover your question, that question at least. There, there are provisions that are specifically listed in the workforce housing conditional use law that will be enforced. It's just those other ones that we talked about earlier that will not.
Give me a minute here, Senator, please. May I respond, Speaker?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Senator Perez, we kept in place the sanitary permit from public health and the dormitory permit in public health. Both, both of those apply to density of a workforce housing facility and how many people you can have under one roof and the number of restrooms and dining spaces and things like that. So all that is still in place. Similarly, the public health building permit and occupancy permit requirements are still in place. Now theoretically, if this bill is passed, we, we could have a temporary worker housing facility that goes through those permitting processes and fails. And fails. Because that is the obligation of the contractors to comply with everything. So I believe, I believe that would be the check more, checkpoint for your concern about density and living conditions.
Thank you. So the other question is for Director Borja.
Senator Perez, sorry, can I just have, Director Borja, do you have the list in front of you? Do you want to read it? I just want to.
Yes.
Still being forced, yes.
It's in, it's in page 42, 21 GCA, Chapter 61. And basically, under conditional use, number 4B, small letter I, small I, unless specifically limited, approval shall be for initial term of 24 months and thereafter renewed annually. So that's one. The other one is the project must be served by an adequate sanitary sewer system. Two, three, the project must have adequate fire flow indicated by minimum of six inch diameter water line or minimum water service conditions imposed by the Guam Water Authority. Five is the project must comply with all health and safety regulations of the government of Guam and OSHA regulations as applicable. Five is each approved project shall include a substantial perimeter fence, which shall be at least of chain link quality and a minimum of six feet in height and be subject to a complete landscape plan. And six, the project must include a development plan indicating specific design parameter for sleeping toilet and shower facilities. So those are the four conditions, in addition to any conditions imposed by the GLUC. All temporary worker workforce housing conditions for approval shall include the following minimum condition. Conditions. And that's it, there are six items under that section, under that paragraph.
Thank you, Director, sorry for the interruption, Senator Perez.
No worries. Oh, yeah, so the question is for Director Borja regarding the applications. You mentioned there were six applications, two are ready for public hearing. You know, what, considering, you know, what is the quickest timeline for those two applications without this bill? What's the quickest those two applications can get out?
For a public hearing, you mean?
Yes.
I'd say with 30 days. 30 days to have a public hearing.
30 days, and then how about making the, at that point, what is the next step?
And that step is the staff report and then to be placed on the agenda. As an action item for the GLUC.
Okay, so if you were to estimate the total amount of time for that, those two applications, what would it be for the final determination, you think?
For the, for the GLUC to with or without the bill?
Oh, just without the.
Without the bill? I'd say 30 to 45 days. We already have a scheduled public hearing for that one particular one. But it's always good to have a plan during pandemic times, which is, you know, not always possible. Now, we only were able to get into that 30, 45 day factor because of the easing of the restriction and PCor 1. But if for any reason we go back to PCor 1 and we have the restrictions on assembly, then you know, that all bets are off in the timeframe on that.
So these two applications have already gone through the ARC, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and with this bill, would it speed up the process?
Yes.
How, how so?
Because you won't have to get approval from the, these other requirements, although, you know, they are covered. The public health and the public safety, for example, must have adequate fire flow indicated by that. You know, and other, or other minimum water services requirements imposed by Guam Water Works Authority, which is usually water pressure issues. So the Guam Fire Department, that, they're the ones that, you know, indicate adequate fire flow. And then number four, the project must comply with all health and safety regulations of the government of Guam. That's, you know, that's public health, that's public health clearance. If they don't meet those safety regulations, health regulations, then, you know, public health shouldn't clear it. And the thing about the chain link fence, you know, that's, I don't know, keep people in or keep people out. And then, of course, a complete landscape plan. Those are usually approved by the chief planner, a complete landscape plan. And then, of course, the project must include development plan, including specific design parameter for sleeping toilet, laundry, food service, security, medical care. Those are public health clearances and Department of Public Work clearances and the building permit. But that one wouldn't apply, of course, to something like a project that Mr. Former Senator Willie Flores mentioned because it's already pre-existing.
So Mr. Borja, so with the 30 to 45 days, does that include clearances from Department of Public Health, Fire Department and GWA? Would that include, can, can things happen simultaneously or do they have to happen sequentially?
Now, you're talking about with or without the bill?
Without the bill.
To go to get clearances, that's, that's, you know, part of the process. I don't know how long a public health will grant them clearance. I don't know how long Fire Department will give them clearance. And like Mr. Swabe said, this could go all the way to the permitting process and not make it because Public Health says, you know, that the Public Health requirement is not adequate. Or Fire Department may come up and say, you know, the power, water pressure is not adequate in those areas. But most, most of the developers, most consultants, when they process this, they almost always know what's coming down from certain agencies because they meet with them even before they submit these applications. They may not agree with the conversation that they have, but at least it moves the process along and let's, you know, let's review it, whatever the position statement is. So it's not always a guarantee that the law passed that this project will be approved by Fire Department or the Public Health, you know, those issues.
Okay.
I can't really give you a timeframe on that, you know.
Yeah, so my line of questioning was really about, you know, is there other alternatives to try to fast track this without having to waive certain requirements of law? And whether things can hap, happen in tandem? So we're not waiting for one step to the next, you know, versus things can happen simultaneously?
You can't fast track it with the, without, you know, without this law because of that public notice requirement. That's at least a minimum of 25 days. And like I said, more, you know, to mail those notices out and like that. And if one landowner doesn't get the notice in that area, the whole application process is basically at a standstill. Now, there was a big case that they had with the four condo buildings up there near GMH. A lady across the street wasn't getting, given certified mail notice and the project was disapproved or revoked. But then it was, the case was reversed because although she didn't get the certified mail notice, she lived, she attended, I believe, a couple of meetings, couple of public meetings, you know, for that thing. And so she couldn't claim that she wasn't, she didn't know about it. But I believe in that case, certainly she wasn't given a certified mail letter. And that was the mistake of land management, it wasn't the mistake of the.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Borja. Just, I guess a question, one question for the, maybe Mr. Swazeley or Mr. Flores. You know, to your knowledge, you know, as far as temporary worker housing, has it ever been repurposed for other uses after the use for temporary workers? Instance, one potential use could be for affordable housing. Is there perhaps an opportunity to, to repurpose these facilities? You're, you're on mute.
Willie, may I respond? Thank you. First of all, to amplify Joe's, Director Joe's opinion, schedule to Senator Perez, here's how the schedule would work. Without this bill, and for, for instance, the two applications which have already been approved for public hearing, I have the first one, it's March 11th, okay? So that's already more than a month from now. Then, we do not go straight to Guam Land Use Commission, we go to the Municipal Planning Council. Now, we have a lot of mayors here and probably it takes a month to give them the application, get it scheduled, do the coordination. That's 60 days, that's 60 days from today. Then we go to GLUC, okay? Now, yeah, it could be done in two weeks, but never have been done in two weeks in my time. Give it another month. So I say this. From today, even the app, even the Black Construction that's been scheduled already, it's 90 days before we get a GLUC hearing, all right? Then begins your other, your other line of questioning. Then the building application process starts, all right? Because we can't build until we get the application. I do building applications. Fast tracking, permitting is an oxymoron. It doesn't happen. I have never seen a permit get approved in less than 45 days like this, all right? And I'm, and I would tell my client, bet on 60 days. So you have 30, 30, 30 plus 60. That's when we start construction. The train left the station. That's the reality of what we're facing right now. If we start in, if we start in 30, 30 and 60, we finish three months, four months, maybe, if we work seven days a week, they're all here already. Everybody's here and in apartments. That's the reality of it. Regarding repurposing, I've never seen it happen. These are basically barracks. Paco's was empty for, for years and years and years. It was not repurposed, and surely they would have done it if they could have. So I don't see it, although I would certainly be open to suggestions and recommendations as how, as to how that could be done, because there will come a day when we will not need these temporary worker housing facilities.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Swazely, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right, thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Taitikui.
Madam Chair, if I can, Mayor Savaris has her hand up. I think she wanted to add to, to Senator Perez's question. If I may allow her first.
Sure.
And am I recognized? Okay, thank you. Okay, so just to add to Senator Perez's question, part of, I remember when the, the workforce housing was built near the Two Levers Point area. Repurposing is, did happen. It's actually happening now where Island Academy is using it for their school. So there was discussion when that workforce housing, that once the construction workers leave, what else can it be used for? And they were looking at affordable housing. But in this case, part of that, that workforce housing area where Cortech is currently at is actually being used by Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank Adrian, who's here, Adrian Kogui. I know the family well, and thank you for your testimony today, as well as Mr. Swigley and as well as Willie Flores. I appreciate you being here, as well as and most especially to the mayors that are here today. Greatly appreciate, and of course, your director of the Mayor's Council, Angel Sablon. Having you here today says a whole lot. I mean, we've had how many mayors come in today? At least five mayors and, and a vice mayor. Jesse, good to see you again. So there, there seems to be, there's a problem here. And, and I, I hear what you're saying about the importance of letting our community know what's going on. It's very, very important, I think, you know. But there is a way we can fast-track things, you know, and making sure everybody is, I mean, it's, it's thinking outside the box. But not like, you know, letting something go that's important, you know, to contribute to something like this, workhouse. Where's how, this workhouse for, said, housing that we need. I mean, this was, what I don't understand, and I, I think I'll give this to either Dan or Willie. We knew that we needed these housings for, for the workers at least five years ago. Why didn't you guys get started back then? Okay, Willie, thank you. Hi, Senator. Good to see you. Thank you, Willie. If you can answer that question, I mean, because, you know, now we're here at the bewitching hour, you know, and got to rush, rush, rush and bypass all these other things, when this could have been done many years ago.
Actually, the, the whole process started many years ago. And then, whether or not we liked the timeline, we were able to plan for the timeline that, that occurred under normal circumstances. So as that, and when we, when we talk to our clients and they ask us, what are we looking at for Guam Land Use Permit? Not a building permit, but a Guam Land Use Permit. We tell them six to nine months and be ready for a year. So at least we could plan by then. As an example, what Mayor Savaris mentioned, I was involved in the workforce housing permit for, for the Ukuru workforce housing. That was a three-year effort. And, and that was a three-year effort, and it took a long time, because there are a lot of requirements from regulatory agencies. You know, workforce housing, I believe, is one of the most, in my, in my experience anyway, is one of the most regulated uses that I've seen so far go through the Land Use Commission. So the process did start. I think everybody was caught off balance, Senator Taitikui, Senator Tello, when the pandemic hit. Because at that time, everything just stopped. But even that process had been in preparation. I think we started the Mount Corporation planning process in 2017. But there's a lot of work that goes into this, into making sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. And sometimes we still miss some Ts and some Is, you know, because there's a lot of technicalities there. But in our, in our, for, for the one that we're waiting for, we actually started that project in 2017, planning for this. So there is a lot of planning that goes way back. But again, we had fully expected that this would be publicly heard and at least the ARC, and at least the ARC process completed by the third quarter of this year, or the fourth quarter of this year. And what has happened now is, like as in many other aspects of it, whether or not you support the buildup, whether anyone supports the buildup or is against it, what has happened now, because of the military issuing these task orders, oh, these guys, the contractors can't really say, okay, I'm bringing in forty workers until they know they're being issued the task orders. And that's, that's when the process starts kicking in. And so, for instance, even though in our case, although their, our, our clients are planning for eight hundred temporary workers for the next two years, their need is probably more, most likely four, between four and five hundred. You know, but planning down, and long-term planning, where they're possibly eight hundred. So in response to your question, really, this is, for all intents and purposes, through the normal process, a two-to-three-year process. And many of us were actually already working on it, you know, way back.
Thank you. Director Borja, please.
I, I just had a, you know, there's also two other issues that we must be cognizant about. The peak of the military buildup kept shifting. It kept being pushed ahead. You know, they said, when they first started looking at the buildup, oh, yeah, you know, a couple of years, the peak of the buildup. And then, secondly, you have the H-two labor uncertainty. You know, yes, we're going to put them in. Oh, yes, we're going to allow them for inside the fence project. Can we do it also for outside the fence? So those two issues also played a part in, I don't know, you know, call it a delay, if you will, but the peak of the military buildup, you know, kept shifting. The camp kept being kicked down the road. And the second factor, I believe, is that the H-two labor uncertainty, and these are the people that, you know, these housing, workers' housing are being developed for. So there was that uncertainty, and I think that uncertainty only became clearer a few months ago, I believe, you know. So that's why the quote-unquote rush to get this is, because it got approved there. And, you know, the, 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 these companies, I mean, you know, it would be a real big risk to, to do that. And I believe in the first one, the big one up there, I believe, the UNX area, you know, they had planned, I believe, on two thousand, you know, a big, big workers' housing there. And they were limited by Water Works, I believe, to only five hundred to begin with, until they complied with certain conditions. And then that's when they moved forward. So there were, you know, things in place there to, I guess, prevent runaway development of building, you know, thousands of housing units up there and there's not adequate water, and it would drain the water from Dedido, for example, in that area. But those two issues also had an effect in, in processing these things.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Dan, did you want to add to that?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. And that being said, when you said it was pushed back, I do know that Department of Labor had a, basically this graph showing the peak of the military buildup and how many workers will be on island. And I think at the time, it was in twenty-twenty-two, you're anticipating ten thousand additional people here for the military buildup. That was going to be the peak, was twenty-twenty. And you're absolutely right, Director Borja. It was pushed back. The timeline kept getting pushed back and further back. So I, I don't know if it's, it probably might be to you, Mr. Borja, or, or again, Willie or Dan. But is the, is DOD providing any kind of relief for these home, these houses for the workforce on DOD property? If we are going through all these requirements by government of Guam, which justly so is needed, especially for our community, can DOD provide these workforce housing areas on their own land? Has anybody brought this to DOD to ask them if we can do that?
Senator, that question is way above my pay grade.
Okay, Dan. Okay, Willie?
Actually, that question was asked and answered by DOD, and their answer was no. This was way back when we were working, and Mayor Savaris, I think, will recall this. We had actually said to DOD, can we, you know, can this thing be, this thing, actually, we didn't say can, and we said, this thing, workforce housing, for all intents and purposes, belongs behind the fence, you know, within the gate. And they said, no. Any contractor who wants to bid, that's their responsibility to, you know. And so that question, it was a good question, but it was asked and answered, and their answer was no.
Thank you, Willie. And Willie, how long ago was that question asked to DOD? Since, you know, the pandemic happened and all these delays came into, to play, and now we're, we're playing catch-up during a time of a pandemic. Can the question be, you know, readdressed to DOD again?
Okay, wow, that's, now that question is above my pay grade, but it was asked in, as far as, as far as I remember, my notes say that the first time it was asked, that I was aware of, was two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen. Yeah, in that period.
That was a while ago. Mayor Savaris, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember that that discussion, Senator, was brought up actually during the Civilian Military Task Force. And remember, the task force was created back in two thousand six. So that was when we were much younger. And so that, you know, and then these, these things also came up during the scoping meetings. And, you know, it was, can you put them on the military bases? And then that's when they said, like, like Mr. Flores said, they said, no. And of course, it was, because that's why they started looking for land that was closer to where the construction was going to be. And then that's where the development started. So that we, because there's concerns where these buses and these trucks are going to be on our roadways. And, you know, they're going to, you know, all the movement with all this. And so at that time, we weren't even sure where the buildup was going to be. Remember, they were still, is it going to be down at Naval Base Guam? Or at Naval Magazine? Or at Anderson? So that too was unsure. But what they did say was, we will help you upgrade your wastewater facility. Because remember, that was, you know, they were going to tap into our, our wastewater facilities in the north. So that's where they pumped money into. And then that's when the contractors had to even, because even was, it was medical. Who are the, are they going to, to be sending their construction workers if there was an accident to GMH? That would stress, again, GMH. That's when they had to guarantee that they would work with private clinics.
Thank you, Mayor Savaris. I mean, thank you for that history, because if there's anybody who was very well involved in that, as the mayor of Dedido, where a lot of it was affected, you were there. And even to the point where they downgraded the amount of Marines coming to Guam, too. So it used to be X amount, now it's only four thousand. So they were lessening the amount of people. Mr. Borja, go ahead, please.
Yes, DOD is concerned with security with non-US citizens on the base. Even today, you can be a US citizen and not granted access to the base. So their concern was a security of having all these people that are non-US citizens on the base. So put them outside.
Well, they work on base, so I don't know what's there's still an issue there. They're working on the base. So, okay. Well, that, I was hoping that someone from the GRM would be here, too, to talk about, you know, really, what are we facing here? How many individuals or how much work there is? But I know we're represented well by, you know, Dan and Willie, who's here, who according to my numbers on these six different projects that was presented to us. And I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to, to look at the, that map. That was very helpful. And I added up to two thousand five hundred and twenty-three workforce housing that, or at least people to, to house for this. So I, I don't think that even comes close to the amount of ten thousand that was predicted by Department of Labor for twenty-twenty-two. But I know that, or I'm hearing what the mayors have to say, and that's something that we need to really put in consideration. Because like anything, like the order dump, it's like, you know, you don't want it in your backyard. And something like this may cause some, you know, community issues. So I greatly appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for answering my questions, Willie, Dan, and Borja. And thank you, Mayor Savaris.
Thank you, Senator Taitikui. Senator Blasier, recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you all for being a part of this hearing process. You know, as I sit and I'm listening to, to the discussions, it just takes me back, and, you know, Director Joe Borja and even Dan Swigley can, and Mayor Savaris has talked about this. You know, this is, this whole issue has been a moving target. And, you know, as we, while we have classified and characterized this, this legislation, and then maybe, maybe rightly so at the time, as something that was an emergent or that was, that was urgent to do. Now, recognizing, you know, what, what is happening, not just on our island, but worldwide and more, especially, you know, in the nation, Kenya, is that, does that urgency continue to exist? Or does it take into consideration many of the other factors that we also have to consider? You know, there, there's been discussion as to why it hasn't moved in the process. And that can be blamed for a number of reasons. One primarily, I'm sure everybody's going to say is, you know, because of COVID nineteen and, and the restrictions that were, that were placed upon us. And someone else can say, well, you know what, that just exasperated something that has been existing for a number of years. That said, is is it urgent? And is it, is it necessary to, to bypass or to forego many of the, of the processes that would normally take place? To be able to make sure this done, this is done, and then we find ourselves with another, you know, Ukuru or UNX property situation, you know? Up, built, ready to go, ready to accept eighteen thousand contract workers and not show up. And so, so I, I, I don't know. I mean, and, and there, I see a lot of subject matter experts here, people who have got their ear to the ground with, with regard to, to what we can expect or what we should expect over the next twelve months. And I, I'd like to hear from anybody who can tell me with any degree of certainty that this is, this is in fact an emergency.
The reason the UNX didn't work, and something like UNX will never work, is because UNX was built on speculation. It was built on speculation that, build an Olympic-style barracks facility for thousands of people, and they will come. Here was the problem. Contractors don't work, they want their workers living with other contractors' workers. That's just a fact of the matter. Because contractors are ultimately responsible for the, every minute of every day of those workers. Meaning, they want them in their own facilities, their own drivers taking them back and forth, their own, they want to feed them, they want to take care of them. That's why it didn't work, and it will never work in the future. So now, we don't build, we don't, we don't think about workers' housing facilities until we have, as Willie said, a task order, a contract in place that is already costed out. And from that, we can, we can determine how many workers are needed. Yep. That's why, that's the only thing that's going to work. And yes, Senator, I can guarantee you, twenty-five hundred are coming in the next, in the, in the next three quarters. Okay, now, listen, this is a conflict in everybody's mind. You know, there's no perfect solution here. I said it to begin with. We have to weigh the options, pros and the cons of each option. And I maintain that. If you're worried about COVID spreading in, for instance, a barracks, imagine COVID spreading in among workers in five hundred apartments, right? I mean, just do the math on this, right? It's just, it's just something that, looking, fast-forward nine months, okay? And then look back and, and go take either option and figure out, did I make the right decision, right? I think the right decision is, let's just get through it. We cannot assure every, we cannot ensure every assurance by the existing law to be in place. However, I say that because we have the public works permits and the public health permits, we have based, we have done a lot better than any ARC position statement, right? Because they ain't going to get built until, until those departments agree with it, yeah? I fully understand the, 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 the need, the capacity and sensitivity to inform your NPC, et cetera, et cetera. And to that point, let me say that I'm happy to attend any of those hearings. And as, you know, as a, generically talk about the situation and specifically talk about my applicants, just to help everybody understand, my purpose the last three months, I wrote this legislation just to help everybody understand, my purpose the last three months, I wrote this legislation three months ago. My purpose the last three months was to make sure everybody understands what's at stake. And then let the chips fall where they may.
And I appreciate that. And that, thank you. And I appreciate that there's also that reality that, you know, an applicant can go through this whole process and still not be approved.
It happens.
Yeah. And so, again, you know, my, my, I guess, consternation was concerned around, worried around the fact that we've been at this game since 2006, okay? And, you know, and to protect people, you know, such as you and your clients and as well as the community. You know, please understand my, my, I don't want to say, you know, that my resistance to this nor reservation. I just want to make sure that, okay, we're doing this, you know, because it's best, this is what we need to do now. And, you know, albeit that it could have been done earlier, it didn't. We're at this point. And it needs to get, and I just need to be able to get that assurance all the way around. You know, COVID is but one. Yeah, the concern about the, about the spread of the virus is one. But that's one of many that I need to be able to process to have some assurances, you know, and some level of comfort that, okay, you know, this is, this is the best cup of tea that we can make with what we got. Okay, so I, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I just want to know, is there anybody else that's on the panel that's on right now that would want to add to that? Well, you know, with that, you know, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. And I'll just continue to listen. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, this is interesting. I kind of follow with the thoughts of Senator Blas. I mean, you know, at the other end, I'm very much an advocate for public notice and public engagement. And I will continue to be, and I'm sure in the term of this legislature, we'll introduce legislation related to that. I understand the need for the worker housing. I think that that point has been made very clear. And I was wondering why, why steps weren't made to accelerate how we could do the public engagement process? I mean, we do it now, just having public hearings on legislation for the entire island. I don't know, again, I'm at a loss because I really think what should be spearheading this agenda and even coming to the legislature to say, how can we facilitate, but also ensure that we have public engagement and have our communities and our village and our residents who would have a concern about this or are supportive of it, have a vehicle to which their voices could be heard. If this is such a burning priority, why isn't this something being spearheaded with the administration coming to us with a recommendation of outlining how, how they can move forward? I mean, maybe the main sponsor might say the administration did come to him. But it would have been good to have a more outlined agenda to say, this is something we want to put on the front burner and facilitate. Because when it comes to public engagement, anything that minimizes that, I really have a lot of heartache about it. I really do. I mean, I, at least I appreciate, you know, the information being provided and the maps to show us where these worker houses would be located. The fact that they are in M1 zones is a very good thing. I don't see them, you know, surrounded by residential homes. So I don't see, we'll probably have the same concerns as we would if they were located elsewhere. But I would rather see a proposal on how can we facilitate public engagement, either through the forums that we're providing now to the community, to, you know, to have our public hearings on legislation that's before us as a body, and see how that can be facilitated to cut down the timeline so that the public engagement process is not what's being taken off the table. Because as I listen and as I read this bill, which a majority of it is an explanation versus the actual, what's actually being put in place, is really taking out the public engagement process. And that I have a problem with. If there's a way that timeline can be shortened, if there's a way it can be facilitated through technology or the use of Zoom conferencing or whatever the case may be to have people have these public meetings or have the mayors with their councils have these meetings. Heck, if I can go to Kmart in Ross today and be surrounded by people, I don't see why we can't facilitate that to get public input on these facilities, especially, you know, as was brought up, you know, with Senator Perez, this like, you know, we don't know. They might need these, these worker houses for the next few years. And then what happens when they no longer need them? You know, are they going to be vacant, empty facilities that are just going to sit there in our communities with, without alternative uses? You know, of course, all those questions might be looked at as concerns down the road. But I just have some heartache with regards to the fact that the one thing that's being taken off the table to cut the timeline is, is public engagement and public awareness and us having an ability to hear what our people's concerns are, particularly adjacent landowners, who I think should very much have, have some input in this process because that's their investment as well. And I don't think that should be simply put aside because we need to facilitate because of this pandemic. We're able to communicate through other means. And if that were put in here and we said, okay, let's reduce the timeline, but still allow for our villages to have input, for our mayors and our municipal planning council and any resident who has, who has a desire to provide public input, then I would be very supportive of doing that. But to simply remove the people out of the equation, I have a problem with that. So I just want to put that on the table, but I appreciate the dialogue and the input. I think we understand what's being said to us. But removing the people from the equation is a little problematic for me. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Minority Leader Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you, Director Borja. So I understand, Director Borja, you're in support of this bill. And you made a couple of recommendations also. Is it, you're correct, Mr. Borja, you're in support of this bill?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And I appreciate some of your recommendations as well. And the bill specifically, again, is just during this pandemic period. It's only enforced during the pandemic period. I just want to make, you know, we're having great discussion. It's really helpful. And it seems like a lot of the issues that were brought up were, even without this pandemic going on, these issues go way back and will probably continue on. But this bill, again, is specific for the pandemic period. And Mr. Borja even suggests adding to that pandemic period for other natural disasters, as he recommended too, because he realizes the shortfalls that they're having to face with in providing these services. But we also, you know, during the submitted public statements as well, like, you know, I want to just highlight some things I read on the Black Construction's testimony, which, which we kind of mentioned too. And one of them, it's 15 months after the A R C meeting. Then they still have to go to the municipal planning hearing. And without relief of this bill 1436, the G L U C process, we were talking about timelines now, the G L U C process won't, won't complete until sometime May 2021. That's 19 months after the application submittal, 19 months, not 30 days, not 45 days, 19 months. Meaning they'll definitely miss the window of opportunity to accommodate the workers that Mr. Swaveley has said some have already arrived and will, the rest will continue to arrive in order to put them in the temporary working housing facility. They're having another 672, but, you know, again, they're really talking about, without this bill 1436, they're going to miss the window of opportunity. The letter also states, they recount, this history is to demonstrate that Black Construction submits their applications in a timely manner. There was some, a question about timeline also. But they've been doing this, you know, much longer than I've been a senator. They know the timelines and it was expressed, I think, by Mr. Swaveley as well. But, but they know how long it, how long it takes to anticipate things to come on down. So they do submit it in a timely manner. And then they said, if we don't do this 1436, we'll be forced to put more than 1,000 temporary workers in apartments and single-family dwellings, most likely through Jiggo, Dedido, Timuning, Manila and Beragada, which are the closest locations to the work site, in addition to the potential impact of the neighborhood welfare. It's going to be, it's a nightmare of fulfilling the responsibilities to feed, transport and provide healthcare. That was another concern. And entertainment of our workers and plus the increase of traffic flow, which the mayors are concerned with as well. Traffic congestion and the impact on every neighborhood where our workers will be housed. You know, I wonder, you know, if we're not going to do 1436, are we going to give public notices to those homes 500 feet from these apartments or other homes that these companies will be renting to say, hey, by the way, you're going to have 10 guys in this house next to you and they're part of the workforce development. You know, I hope you don't mind, but we're going to be renting cars and parking them all over the street wherever we can. And I understand you've been there for 30 years, but don't worry, this is only temporary. You know, this is what we're faced with right now. And it's because of the pandemic situation. But, but it probably goes back further than that. Mr. Swaveley was, was saying since 1972, you know, he's been dealing with this, right? And, you know, it's just going to keep, keep the temporary workforce house accommodation. What they're asking for is for these, and especially in this Black Construction letter, he says, we have, we have the temporary building already. I mean, we have the housing available here and it's been approved by the legislature more than 10 years ago. And it's for the public safety and welfare and everything. So they, they got, the structure, at least for this one, is, is in place. You know, the mayor's concerns, yes, I completely agree with, or other public concerns, I completely agree with. But that, that is, that has nothing to do with the fault of anybody applying for this. I think it's a, as my colleague had said, it's, it's the procedural process that we haven't been really, it's like red tape. It's so backwards, it's so antiquated and we should be doing something about it. And instead of, you know, possibility of 1,000 workforce workers going to be my neighbor and there's a condo vacant next to me. And maybe they'll have some good food recipes I can join them with to enjoy their new cuisine for wherever they're from. But, but this bill is, which the director has approved, is specifically for the COVID period. We're just asking for this, nothing long-term after that. If COVID is over and the governor says, boom, you know, eureka, stars are aligned, then, then this bill is not enforced, right? It's no longer, it's no longer an issue. And we're back to hopefully expediting and streamlining this process and getting rid of the, the red tape to, to, to have it safely done. And like Mr. Swaveley said, you know, if they don't do it right, following all the procedures, making everything is done correctly, but they, if the contractor does not do it right, he doesn't get it, get it permitted. But right now, we're just concerned of this workforce because of our situation where we're at, that are coming in, that will be, you know, if done properly, it will extremely help our island. You know, and probably they can, these guys can work outside our fences as well. But I guarantee we're going to have some good general fund generated from that to help, help with what we desperately need in the government. So I appreciate all the testimony and I look forward for this bill to move forward on the floor. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I was just reading the testimonies of both Mr. Goi, the concerns that he had and also the testimony from Black Construction. And I think my, my, my concern is the testimony from Black Construction really shouldn't have put that out there, you know? I mean, we're threatening to have thousands of people all over the island. I mean, come on, if we're going to do a buildup, let's do it responsibly. Let's bring in the people responsibly. If we got a contract that's out there, then we bring in the amount of people that we need for the contract. But to come out and say that the people, that, to the people, that we're going to have construction workers all over the islands and single-family homes and condo units, whatever it may be, I can, I understand that. But let's not be telling the people that because that's not the facts. And I think Black Construction was irresponsible in that, in that testimony that I saw, the written testimony. I wish they were here to actually come out before us so that we can hear what they have to say and not write it. Mr. Goi has a lot of good concerns. You know, we shouldn't bypass processes that don't need to be bypassed. We're going to be setting a precedence that I don't know will be able to repeal. So that's just my concerns, Madam Speaker. And I look forward for this bill to move forward and being voted on the floor.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I have a couple of questions before the sponsor, Senator, I mean, Mr. Swaveley.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I wrote that letter for Letter Kai with his concurrence, of course. We felt it was necessary not to throw some, not to throw some, you know, drama or you better do as we say out there, but just to be honest, just be honest. Had we not, had we not shown to everyone that this is what's going to happen and it is what's going to happen, y'all would have come back and said, why didn't you tell us this was going to happen? So that's why we put it in there. Not to, you know, not to pose some sort of, you better do what we say sort of thing. Again, we, we're really working here towards, I shared everything I know with, with you all. And that's the reason why we wrote that in there. They are coming. They will be housed somewhere. Do the math, that's just what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so my, my questions would be, so the Director Land Management did voice his support for the bill, but he also voiced a request that notice be provided. And I think if I'm understanding correctly, the mayor's also voiced support for some notice that would be provided, you know, first that their municipal planning councils would be, that the input from the municipal planning councils would be addressed and that notice to the adjacent landowners. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Swaveley and Mr. Flores, Senator Flores, if you, if you would agree to that being included in part of this bill, what, what type of notice can we include that might address their concerns as well as still keep an expedited process? Can you see any, Mr. Swaveley?
Well, it's a really interesting question, you know? Normally on Guam, we've learned that a notice means we have an opportunity to talk about something, you know? And I'm, I see that this sort of notice might engender the same feeling. Now, a notice saying that the advice that da-da-da-da-da is going to happen, assuming all permits are in place, and a notice that really is fair and reflects both sides of the equation here, yeah, that, that could be something. I don't think we can go to the 500-foot radius properties though because that work hasn't even started at Land Management yet. And I'll tell you, that, that work is, normally, I give, I give four weeks for that, right there. And that work hasn't even started. So no, a public notice in the newspaper or at the village level or whatever, yeah, we can work something out and I'd be glad to help write something like that. But just so long as it doesn't mean that, yeah, and we're going to have a public hearing in 60 days, you know, and then we're going to decide, we can't wait that long. I'm sorry. These are my rules. I'm sorry, but that's what we have to live with.
Right, yeah. Mr. Flores, Senator Flores.
Yeah, I, I don't have any issue with a public notice. I think that, I think that if the concerns of the senators and the mayors is that there's not enough notification to the, to the, not, not to the surrounding landowners or to the villagers or even to the whole island, frankly. Because even the, even the current procedure, senators, if I may, without disrespect, I'm not disrespecting, but I've always thought that the current procedure is kind of funny. Not, not funny in a humorous way, but funny because we are only notifying people within 500 and 750 foot. What about the guy that's a 751 foot, you know? And so I've always thought that it probably would be better if we put a flurry of public notices in the media, in the print media, in the, you know, in the radio and TV media, if we notice like that. Because, you know, put yourself in the place, for instance, I'll, I'll, most of these M1 projects have already been publicly heard. Most M1 zones have all, probably all have the benefit of a public hearing, have had the benefit of public input. So this element now, this conditional use in the, in the M1 zone, that's what we're talking about, right? So for instance, up in the project, I won't mention the project by name, but the project that's up along Route 3 that's asking for both a zone change and then a conditional use. If I live in the 751 foot, if I have a property in the 751 foot, outside 751 foot radius, well, that affects me too, right? So I think that, if I, you know, I think that the idea of putting more public notice is fine, but I would think that we would use it as a general notice in the media, whether it be print or ad, I mean, print or TV or radio or all of them, that's fine. I don't see any issue with that. I think that the public is well-protected by the regulatory agencies. I think that what the concerns might be, might be the social implications. Traffic is a big issue. Traffic is a big concern that probably the public would want addressed. And then, in fact, I was speaking with one of the mayors, and she was saying that she was hoping that the workforce housing regulations would be amended to say that, look, these are temporary workers. If they're going to be housed in a place where it's near, you know, somewhere populated place, then there should be a curfew. These guys shouldn't be walking around at 10:00, 30:00, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. You know, that's something out of my range of expertise. But in terms of public notice, if it can be done efficiently, I don't see any problem. I don't see an issue with it. I think the public should be notified of what's going on, not just in their neighborhood, but on the island. So that's my position, I'm fine with that.
All right, and so the other premise of this bill is that the regulatory agencies who are part of the building permit process, who have to sign off on that building permit, are going to get that shot at the review and comment, I guess, on the projects and enforcement. But I wanted to ask the mayors, so the bill doesn't, you know, provide for municipal planning council input or, you know, or the, since the public hearing would be waived in the village, the villagers' input. So, but would you be able to obtain municipal planning council feedback, I guess, prior to, I mean, if this bill is passed and just submit that, I'm not sure, I'm thinking about it, prior to the building permit being issued? You know, we made it a condition that there's MPC approval prior to the building permit being issued. Would you be able to do that within, say, 30 days? I just wanted to get your feedback on that. Is that something that might be, Senator, I mean, Mayor Savores?
Yes, if it's, we can get things done as long as we know, because we have the option to call for a special meeting with our municipal planning council. We can call a special meeting, you know? I mean, my regular meeting is every second Tuesday. I know that Baragata has theirs every second week as well. And, but, you know, we have the opportunity as mayors to call our municipal planning council on a non-regular meeting. So if something comes up that's urgent, we will address it by calling our members in.
Okay, so the difference would be that you would not have available to you the agency review comments, right, that our committee comments, and you wouldn't have available to you presumably the input of your villagers. And so it would be municipal planning council only, a little bit?
And Speaker, our municipal planning council members are made up of people from the villages that represent their different areas. And with that, they will get input if it's regarding the Route 3 area or NCS Astumbo. We would get our representative from that area to, kind of like canvass the area and talk to the residents, and then bring that information back to us so we can make that decision.
Any other mayor want to provide input on this point? Senator, I mean, Mayor Blas.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, I agree with Mayor Melissa. And in terms of the, you know, informing our residents, in a form of maybe the billboards and putting onto TVs or newspapers would be great. But we also, yes, the municipal planning council play a very good role because they're like our board. Some of them sit on the, like Waterworks, GPA, they sit on different committees, EPA, and any that would affect our community, we have a representative on that department. And so, you know, with that being said, we can come up, I'll have a meeting next week, Thursday, that we have planned so that we can submit our position with conditions with this bill 14-36. Thank you.
Any other mayor? If not, Senator Flores, did you want to say something on that point?
Yes, the mayors, I don't know how many of the senators are intimately familiar with the packages that are submitted for this process. The mayors are intimately familiar with it. So just to, if anyone's not familiar with it, when we submit a package like this, every detail is laid out. So you'll see exactly what the building is, you'll see the size of the rooms, where the rooms are located, where the parking is, how many beds per room, where the showers and the toilets are, where the feeding facilities are and the dining facilities, where the recreational facilities are. So when these packages are, as our practice is, whenever we are doing something in a village, we will give the mayor an advanced copy of what we're planning. And that is the same information that goes to the regulatory agencies. And much of it has already been in pre-discussion with the regulatory agencies. So the details of the, so you, what I'm trying to say is you wouldn't say, okay, we're doing workforce housing, we've got 500 beds, we might put it there, we might put it here. No, the requirements of the agencies are you tell us exactly where you're going to put it, you tell us the exact configuration, you give us exact dimensions. We coordinate with the fire department way ahead for in terms of fire and ingress and all that, and with Waterworks and Power. And the package, by the way, the package that's received by the GLUC, and in our case, with advanced copies of the mayors, tells you how much power is going to be demanded, what the power demand is going to be, what the wastewater generation is going to be, what the water demand is going to be. And there's also much discussion on traffic and all this other stuff. So this package, by the time the mayors receive it, should be about 90% correct in terms of the layout. And when I say 90%, that's because during the process of Mr. Swavey alluded to, and Mr. Borja, Director Borja alluded to, the regulatory agencies may change some things in there. For instance, the fire department may say, no, I don't want the stairs over here, move it over here. And so we will adhere to that. But whatever package is submitted and received, you basically know, if you look at that plan, you basically know where everything is going to go and their dimensions and the numbers. I just wanted to throw that in, thank you.
Thank you. Well, for me, you know, I'm very concerned about setting some kind of precedent where we downplay the importance of public input. I just feel like we've come so far and to create, in creating opportunity for people in a village to comment on projects. And so, of course, it's very concerning to me. However, I do admit that, you know, I'm not happy with the circumstances. I do agree some of it, that's COVID-related, some maybe not, you know, maybe some just systematic. However, I do believe a compelling case has been made as to, you know, this is urgent for us now. And that's why I've tried as the committee chair to put this matter on in one of the first available slots that I've had to have a public hearing. And I've tried to notify the mayors that I thought were especially impacted because the projects are in their village, notified all the mayors through the mayor's council, and tried to notify the public, especially even giving them a summary of what, you know, would be bypassed by this bill. And we've heard today which parts of the law will not be bypassed by this bill. And just so that I could at least, you know, feel like the public's been... I've tried to make the public aware. I don't believe they're fully aware, but, you know, that's an effort that I'm trying to make here, also to treat it as an urgent matter. But just wanted to ask Mr. Swavey, you know, I've discussed this with you prior to the hearing, and I just wanted to know, because of the urgency, you said you wrote this bill three months ago, but did you pursue any other resolution of this matter prior to legislative type of resolution?
Yes, applicants did a couple of things. We, first of all, we submitted our applications well in advance, right? Black Construction, we're talking November 2019, yeah? And also, we reached out to land management in various ways with offers to facilitate public hearings through DPS protocols wherein applicants will pay for security to make sure there's social distancing and mask wearing, will pay for sanitizing restrooms and sanitizing the chairs at public hearings, and even having an overflow area with outdoor speaker and TV in the event that more than 25 or so would show. So that, and we've also suggested that, why can't ARC meetings be conducted with Zoom? I mean, I have in front of me twice the number of people that I'm talking to all afternoon than we ever show up at an ARC meeting. Yeah, so we asked that, too, you know, that to date has still not happened. I also wrote a resolution for the commission to pass, their authority, as Mr. Borja alluded to, to pass to put the burden of this property research on the shoulder of applicants. Make us responsible for the property research. Okay, so it's going to cost us a few thousand dollars. We will hire a security title or title guarantee or one of those, and title companies whose profession it is to do property research, and we will hire them to add that to the application, right? So it's done. We don't have to, like, get the application approved and then start that process in-house. Yeah, so, yeah, we've reached out in a number of ways. And it was after none of that was, none of that was successful that I wrote this bill. Again, with deep conflict, with deep conflict, because I share your concern. I share your concern, but at the end of the day, this is the best alternative.
All right, was there, you know, this only affects, or this is only effective during P-COR conditions such as we are in?
That's a good point, because right now, you see, right now, it looks like the process is starting again, the way it used to start. Senator Ada or maybe Senator Blas alluded to the fact, hell, it worked 10 years ago, why can't it work now? Well, it can't work now because it didn't work now, not because it can't, because it didn't, okay? But now, okay, things are starting to come out of planning division. Hey, we have our first public hearing. This could be it. I mean, you might say in this bill, hey, this is it, the door's shut, nobody else. Because somebody submits a temporary worker housing facility today, really, they're basically subject to the normal process. All right, go for it. You don't get, you know, you don't get to do the fast track. They're only dealing with, what did we agree it was, five? They're only agreed, dealing with the five that are now been stuck for so many months.
Is there any reason that this was not dealt with, kind of like those emergency guidelines that have been put in place by executive order?
I wrote a justification for trying to get into the emergency declaration under public health, under the public health emergency authority of the governor. Yeah, it was hard, but we did it, and it was reviewed judiciously, I'm sure. And it was felt like it just didn't meet the threshold level of being eligible for an emergency declaration. I tried that in November.
Through executive orders, not, none was granted. Okay, so Senator Flores.
Yeah, I wanted to add, because, wow, that was a good question that you asked, Speaker, regarding what, did we try anything else? One of the other things we tried is we requested, if it was possible, that the government would allow the building permit to go through the process while the GLUC process was being held up, to go through the process at the developer's risk. No guarantee from the government, the GLUC wasn't going to issue, you know, the conditional use permit. But to save time at the risk, could we be sending the design through the process? And then, once that design was approved, then it would be subject to land use commission hearing with no guarantees from the government. Unfortunately, I think Mr. Borja will confirm that it wasn't within their statutory authority to be able to do that. And so that was the other, one of the other ways that we were hoping to see if we could, you know, get around the existing situation or to handle this through the existing situation.
I like that idea. All right, I was going to ask the opposite, if, yeah, we could come back with GLUC after the building permit, but I'm not going to go there right now. All right, so I'm going to go to the sponsor, Senator Joseph Augustine here.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for everyone that has participated. And Mr. Swavey, thank you for writing the bill. You know, I received this back in November, and we were trying to work this, and it was the election time, and everything was like, oh, we can't go through this. That's why I introduced the bill as soon as I could. And, you know, folks, and for the mayors today, come on. You know what's coming up, you know what's coming up in your village. Start getting your councils going, get your municipal planning councils going. I was in one of them in Jiggo. Once we know something's happening in our village, we just start reacting to it. We're not going to make the reasons that, well, we didn't get a notice. Come on, let's just work this. I've always supported every mayor, and I know every one of you out there, you all know me. Whenever you needed any help, you reached out to me, I responded. Anything I have to do, save Southern Guam, my wife, my other half is all from the south, so there's not an issue. It's not about trying to rush and bypass and not recognize the people, want them, letting them be known. But I believe that Senator William Flores mentioned it. When the package is submitted, everybody knows what's going on. Put it out. Don't make the excuse you didn't get the official notice. People, put it out. If you need some help, I know that Dan Swavey, Willie Flores, and everybody else will help with whatever they need to put it out. Putting out a notice is the easiest part, but to delay any issues to get this going, we're all familiar with this, about all the military buildup. That is nothing new to any of you folks out here. We've always anticipated the military coming, and they never came. That was an issue for 10 years. So, you know, I hope the bill comes, goes before the floor. We'll make the adjustments, wherever we need to make the adjustments. We've got some notes given by Mr. Joe Borja, and I'll just reach out to him. Give me your notes of what you're recommending, we'll work this through everybody, and let's get this bill on the floor. And let's vote, and let's get this moving. And it's only during the P-COR. After that, it ends. Now, we want to write something that will anticipate any worse and any other disaster in the future, consider this a notice. Be aware and be prepared, and let's just move on. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you all for participating in the hearing today.
I want to thank the mayors again for being here today and representing their villages, bringing their concerns to the committee. You're welcome to submit any in writing as soon as you can, please. I want to, of course, you know, we want to find the right balance to remove delays or impediments that were exacerbated because of, you know, the pandemic. I do agree that the GLUC and the ARC process is moving now. Public hearings are going to be set. So hopefully, this will not become an issue again, and that we can resolve whether electronic hearings are allowed in the future or not. But for the current situation that we are in, we are trying to find a balance for these projects so that we can, through them, ensure that the community is informed, that they are safe, that their health is not ignored. So we will take all the feedback and work with the sponsor to address the issues raised today and hopefully to move this forward as soon as we can. So I want to thank you all again. Sisus maasi. Take care of yourselves.
Thank you.
So the hearings now adjourned, it is 4:52 PM.